I'll do it tonight.
Sure.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. Lord, we just ask for your guidance and your wisdom to make good choices, to do what's right for our children and our parents. Lord, we just seek your advice and your will in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. All right. Any requests for changes to the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. Any citizens wishing to address the board? Is there anybody that can get a chance to sign up with a paperwork that would like to address the board? All righty. Then we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Welcome, everybody. Just wanted to start off saying I think we're off to a good start with our new school year. It seems like four weeks have flown by and things are going good. That's not to say it's not been without its challenges. We're already seeing a high rate of absences because of different viruses and bugs that are going around. So we're seeing that in students and staff alike. And so hopefully, you know, this pattern of, we're seeing everything, strep, COVID, probably some flu going around. We're missing a board member tonight, I think, because of that. So just kind of be in prayer for all those folks and that we can kind of survive all the bugs that are going around and help our attendants improve. I also wanted to mention that some things that is going on in both schools, at McCleary Elementary and at the high school. And one of the things that, in both schools, that I have kind of put before the staff and kind of challenged them is that we really want to focus on relationships this year. It's kind of become our theme. And we want to do everything that we can to support our students. And as part of that, we're going to be starting a mentor program here in a couple of weeks where we try to pair up students and staff. And that's not just teachers. That's all staff. It could be a custodian or cafeteria worker, a bus driver, whoever. Someone that just, a child feels comfortable they can talk to or may have a relationship with an adult. Just try to support them, especially those students that are at high risk or maybe just needs a little extra help. So we want to try to start that here soon. McCleary Elementary School is also excited to have expanded their pre-K program. So we have added a new class and they have a bunch of new four-year-olds and three-year-olds, which, as you can imagine, has presented some challenges. But I really want to thank our staff and Ms. Stevens for the excellent job that they're doing. I think early on, they have seen the need and they're rising to the challenge. And I think we're going to see great dividends pay off from what we're doing there with the pre-K program. MES is also celebrating grandparents' week this week. I think they've had a great turnout so far. Ms. Stevens, how long does that go for? Is it all week or?
Thursday will be the last.
Okay. Thursday will be the last day of that, so we invite all the grandparents to come if they can. And I know they've enjoyed having those folks here with us during lunchtime. MES students are receiving 30 minutes of targeted reading and math remediation or enrichment. So if they're doing well, they get to do some enrichment activities. But I think this is a huge initiative, and again, thanks to Ms. Stevens for kind of spearheading this, to where we're identifying children early based on assessments at the beginning of the year. We're testing those students and then immediately remediating based on what we see from those assessments. And then this process will be repeated every six weeks so that we're constantly staying up with, you know, what is the child lacking and how do we meet that need quickly so that a child doesn't get too far behind. Okay? So very excited about what they're doing there. Craig County High School enjoyed its first tailgate for the first football game of the season and had an impressive win over Bland County for that first game. So I understand everybody had a good time and I'm sure the players feel good about starting off season one and O, so congratulations to them. We also, because we had a two-week break after that first game, we were able to top-dress the field with another 100 tons of sand again. So still trying to improve on the field. We've got a lot of good compliments on the field and how good it looks, but we want it to be smooth so it's a good playing condition. And really wanted to thank Coach Fisher and some of the things that they have done. He was able to get the paint and the robot to spray it today, I think. They actually, or yesterday, they actually did that. And some folks, nice folks from Bottotac came and donated their time and the robot and the paint to do that. Also, Reece Stebar donated the hauling of the sand and got it here and didn't charge us anything for that. And then Luke Scott and Mountain Castle Sand to donate the sand. So really appreciate all the help that we've gotten from the community to make that happen. It makes a huge difference on how well our field is. So thanks to all those folks. Also, with the high school and middle school, just want to say it looks like the new phone policy is going well. We didn't even have the kind of first-week backlash that I was expecting, which is great. And so I just want to thank all the students and parents who have cooperated and supported this effort. I'm so thankful that the board took action when we did. The state is still, you know, trying to figure it out, and that's good. But I think we're just that much farther ahead of the curve by going ahead and implementing that before school started this year. And I've heard nothing but good things from the administrators that that's going well. And I think they really appreciate you guys taking the action on that when you did. Along with that, the First Lady of Virginia, Ms. Susan Youngkin, will be hosting a fireside chat on September 19th. This will be a video broadcast, but there will be several schools that are hosting a site. We have been invited to join Allegheny Highlands at their site if people want to go in person, where you could possibly ask questions with the First Lady. She will be there with Dr. Jonathan Haidt, who is the author of the book, The Anxious Generation, which was the book I referred to, I think, last month. And Jessica has a copy of it if anyone wants to borrow it. She'll probably let you borrow that. But they're just having these town hall meetings to answer questions from parents, to share the data that he has been researching for years, talking about the adverse effects of social media and cell phones with our youth today, and not just youth, adults as well, but primarily for our students. So if anybody wants to join that, Shelley has put a link on our website and you can find more information if you want to attend one of those sessions in person. And I'm sure they'll probably have it recorded, too, if you might want to watch that later. Also, along with the high school, I had a really good meeting today with Mr. Rusty Zimmerman. His kids have enrolled with us this year as homeschool kids before, and now they have enrolled with us so that they can take advantage of some of the dual enrollment opportunities that we have, also some of the opportunities that we have with BTEC. And so it's very exciting for us. You know, when I first met with the Zimmernmans, it was a good meeting. I kind of explained our thought process and how we thought that would work. We also had a representative from the community college here to answer questions. And so far, their kids have enjoyed it. They see the benefit of it. And Rusty and I see this as a growing opportunity. Because we have a pretty large homeschool group here in the county, we want to be able to offer this service. So this is kind of the first pilot of this. And the paper that I handed out to you guys just a second ago just kind of outlined some of the cost that the Zimmerman family is dealing with. They, and they're not, they didn't come to me today to say, oh, can you pay for this bill? That's not what this is about. But what we wanted the board to look at is if this is a program that's going to grow and we feel like it's going to be a mutual benefit to us as the public school system, but also our homeschool kids. As you guys may remember, when I was hired on, I said that I support all education of all kids. And I looked at it as a rising tide lifts all boats, right? So this is one of the ways to do that. So at some point, I think, you know, we'll try to look at this. Is it something where we want to try to help families who want to enroll their students? Again, they would enroll in Craig County Public Schools. That way, they could have access to some of these programs like BTEC and the dual enrollment classes at the community college. So I just wanted to put this in your hands for information tonight. You can look at it. Mr. Zimmerman said he and his wife or the kids would be glad to come and speak to you guys about their experience and how they see that maybe the good and the bad and all of that. And we'll discuss it at another time. But I did want to go ahead and put it in your hands tonight so you can start thinking about the pros and cons of this, okay?
One quick question.
Sure.
The dual enrollment, for the kids that's here doing dual enrollment for the college classes, is that a cost to them also or?
That's a good question. So if we have a teacher here in place, for example, Mr. Places does the advanced math, I believe. If we have a teacher in place who is qualified to teach it and the community college has vetted them to teach it, then it's free for our students, okay? Now, if, let's say they want to take a class we didn't have a teacher for, maybe Latin, for example. Then if they could take it online while they're here at school, but because we don't have a teacher, they'd have to pay for the tuition cost, okay? So that's kind of what some of this is. And you'll see with some of these figures, the kids are able to take it here for free because we have a teacher in-house to do it. If not, they're paying the full tuition bill at this point, okay?
For the AP classes, even if we have a teacher in-house, I think they have to pay to take the AP test, though, is that correct?
To take the test.
Or are we, yeah. Yeah, they don't have to pay for the class, but in order to take the AP test and get college credit, I think they have to pay for that, yeah.
And I'm not sure what that test costs, but it's.
It wasn't, it was around $100, I think, when I was in school anyway. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I would think.
Probably gone up a little bit, but.
Yeah, it's probably about $150 or something. But that's kind of the way it is now. So, you know, what the board might look at is to say, okay, we are getting revenues because that increases our average daily membership. Our ADM goes up, so we are getting revenue from that. So maybe we could help out with some of the tuition cost, just as an example. So again, just wanted to get it out for, you know, kind of early information now, and then we'll look at it a couple of months from now and kind of see if the board wants to take action and try to improve that some, okay? So that was kind of a report on our school situations. And again, I'm just very thankful for how our school has gotten off to a good start. And then I kind of wanted to shift a little bit and talk about our facilities. One of the changes, and I may have mentioned this before, is I had kind of put a top priority on replacing our roof systems just because of their age. We felt like we had a number of leaks, and we do have a number of leaks. But what we found is most of those are coming from our plumbing rather than the roof. After we had the hurricane rain a few weeks ago, and I think we probably got about somewhere between three and four inches here, we did a pretty thorough check of the school. We were, you know, we were closed that first two days of school because of that storm. And we did a pretty thorough check of the school, and we really only found one leak that we were sure was coming from the roof, and that was down in the old culinary room. So our roof system is still intact pretty well, so we feel like we can buy a little time. And because of that, we feel like the plumbing system and the boiler system is a bigger priority. So one of the things, you know, if we want to look at that, if we can shift our funding or our focus toward that, a couple of things that that's going to do. One is going to give us reliable heat in all the schools, which is critical, especially with cold weather coming on. Also, we've got to fix some of these leaks. We've got multiple leaks. Ms. Stevens and Ms. Steinling are calling me all the time. We've got to do something about these leaks. And we don't want it to become a mold issue as well. So we need to head that off. And also, we have, we've had hot water issues in our cafeteria for a long time. Devin Huffman has worked tirelessly to try to fix some of those. We've replaced a lot of component parts. But I think one of our big problems is the water heater for the kitchen is tied into the water system for the whole school. So it's like you've got a fairly good-sized water tank, but it's being bled back into the main system of the school, and it's not able to keep up with the demands of the kitchen. So we've got to get hot water in that kitchen or we're going to get in trouble with the health department. So we know we've got to address that and address that quickly. That's, Ms. Crowder has been using paper plates and plastic utensils because of our hot water situation. So if we could get our dishwasher line functional again with the hot water, we could go back to the traditional trays and silverware. So that's kind of, wanted to shift to that. With that being said, I have invited Ms. Abby Weagle to come back and talk to you guys. Y'all may remember Abby. Abby, come on up. And Abby is with Schneider Electric, and she was here to give us an update on the energy audit and some options that we may have. And I talked to Abby a few days ago. She said she had some new news for us and was willing to come down and share, so I thought it would be a good time since we're going to kind of be looking at our facilities and some of these projects that we need to do. So Abby, the floor is yours.
Sounds good. Is it, you guys can hear me?
Yeah, you may have to get close to it, but yeah, it's on.
Sounds good. Nice to see you all again. Thank you for the introduction. I know it's been a little while. So as Mr. Huff just said, I am a program manager for Schneider Electric, which basically means that I work with K-12 schools here in the state of Virginia. And so we've been connected since, I believe, November of last year when we met at BSBA, and ever since have been working with you all to evaluate the opportunity of doing an energy savings improvement project and see the viability of reinvesting some money into the facilities that way. And so, so far, what we've done is an overview of your energy and utility costs as well as a walkthrough of your facilities to put together an estimated scope and an estimated savings for a potential project opportunity. And today, we're not having you vote on anything. We're just being informational and kind of spreading out that information from the business case analysis we did a couple of months ago. And please feel free to ask any questions at any point. Should be pretty interactive. So the goal of today really is just to walk you through everything we've done so far and give you guys a little bit of information and background. So first, we'll start off and just recap kind of how the process of an energy savings project works since it's been a little bit, and go through some project goals. And then from there, we'll jump into scope opportunities through an energy conservation measure matrix, as well as talk through savings and alternate funding opportunities before getting into those updates that Mr. Huff just mentioned, as well as next steps. And so our goal at Schneider is to not just do a project, but also to be a partner with our clients. And so hopefully, you've been able to see that over the last several months of us working together. But one way we like to do that is to not only have project goals, but also figure out how we can integrate those into your overall district goals. So I know a couple of months back, Mr. Huff said you all were working on setting your vision and your goals for the district overall during the new administration. And so having a conversation with him from there, we identified these three goals on the bottom that kind of fit into your overarching goals. And please, if there's anything you think should be added or removed, let me know. But those goals were, first off, to modernize the learning environment through safety improvements, improvements to your heating, improvements to your lighting, from a variety of different standards, focusing on your priorities. And then the next was to utilize alternative funding sources. So I understand that as a board, you've been going through all different facets of your spending as a school district to try to maximize the potential and where you're spending your money, even down to, I think, copiers. So this fits right in with that in terms of our funding model. And then the last would be to empower students to feel prideful about the school district that they go to when they step inside school. And we do that through, obviously, bringing improvements to them, but then also incorporating marketing and student engagement opportunities in with our projects. Anything, anyone wants to add to the goals? Feeling good? Okay. So to start off, I'll give you guys some background just on how an energy savings performance contracting model works. You can see here a visual depiction of that funding model with the bar charts on the upper-right corner. And so as you're seeing, there's two different boxes, one in green and one in blue, the majority of which contributing to the energy bill. So these are your electricity and fuel costs combined. And then the bottom is operations and maintenance spend. What we do is look for gaps and opportunities to reduce costs through efficiency measures that then contribute to that gray box. So once you're reducing your costs in terms of your electricity and your natural gas, as well as a little bit in that operations and maintenance category, you're using that gap, which is the difference between what you would have been paying and what you budgeted to be paying for your facilities, and what you would then be paying after those improvements are made, to fund something called a TLP, a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement, over 15- to 20-year period traditionally. Is there any questions on the funding model? And so applying that to your district, we did a walkthrough a couple of months ago. I think it was actually during FFA Week, which was fun, and surveyed your sites with the help of Shane and Devin. And so, as you can see, we just included a couple photos here, the first being your ventilation system that I know you have on your list of goals that you'd like to improve here, since it had originally been removed a couple of years ago. And then the next is a photo of your boiler, and the last being the elementary school entrance, which we'd be looking to do some safety improvements at. So, oh, sorry, ignore the red dot. But this is a better picture overall of all the scope that we evaluated during our walkthrough that was mentioned that could be of interest in a project. And so as you'll see, we have some lighting improvements when it comes to occupancy sensors as well as outdoor lighting, since you guys did upgrade LEDs throughout the school district a couple of years ago. And then from there, we have HVAC upgrades. The DOA stands for Dual Outdoor Air System, so this would be bringing ventilation back into your classrooms. And then from there, boiler dual fuel conversions. We'd be looking to not only upgrade your boiler, but then also offer the option to do both fuel, both fuel options as the rates are continuing to fluctuate pretty substantially and sometimes fuel oil actually ends up being cheaper. So we'd want to leave you guys with both of those options available. And then from there, we also have roof replacement listed in certain areas of the school. We'd be looking to put solar on your facilities as part of this project. It's a large portion of the energy savings, and so depending on the solar option that you would move forward with, a roof replacement could fit into a project. And then we have security improvements. Security vestibules or mantraps are very commonly being implemented at school districts now with all the safety concerns that exist. And so we'd just be looking to expand your entrance to add that. And then lastly, we have a variety of water and plumbing improvements, from your sink faucets to your water treatment, as you have a large amount of lime filtration buildup that we'd be looking to flush out. And so this is a lot of slightly confusing information. It is listed in terms of solar options that we're going to present to you in the following slides, because all of this scope would apply to the entire school division. And so really, the takeaways that I want to offer you from this slide are that with the inclusion of solar, we believe that you'd be able to fund one of two priorities, or one priority in each of two buckets. So you can see next to that red dot, the two buckets would be your HVAC. So you'd be able to choose between your dual outdoor air system or your fuel conversion with the boiler system, as well as one from the following category being outdoor lighting or the lime filtration system. And so we'd be looking to further evaluate which opportunities work out best for you, which you'd be able to prioritize through this process. But that's based on the savings that we're able to estimate, what we think we can offer you in a budget-neutral project.
Abby, is there dollar figures attached to those projects?
We don't have dollar figures attached to them now, so what we'd be looking to do moving forward is go through some type of procurement, and then from there be in what's called an investment-grade audit phase. This is where we're having all of our engineers come on-site across all disciplines, and we're getting you full engineering across each scope measure with prices, with cost, and then your finalized scope as well. So that's when we're matching kind of the full figures with how much you're willing to spend and kind of how much you're able to save to match up the best project opportunity for you. And that phase is also associated with a little bit of financial liability through a contingency fee. So this is 10 cent per square foot of your facility, and would only be paid if you did not then move forward into a construction contract.
Okay.
So just for a heads up on what could potentially come forward.
And that's 10 cent per square foot on the whole facility?
On the school, yep.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, I didn't mention the lime issue, but when I was talking about the plumbing, that is a big part of it. It's part of why we're having so much trouble in the cafeteria. It's our understanding that, we've talked to the PSA, can they treat the water before it actually gets to us in the building? And it's my understanding that they can't.
They don't treat the water before it gets here?
Not for that, not for lime. I think they, they're treating it for E. coli and coliform bacteria, but not for lime. So, you know, we're probably looking at a pretty big system, even if we were just treating the water that came into the cafeteria, for example. Still going to be a fairly significant system. If we treated the water that comes through the whole school, even bigger. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. But I'm glad you put that in there.
I appreciate it. Yep, of course. And I know that plumbing is a recent priority, so we could also evaluate where that might fit into this scope matrix. But Eric, who's the project development manager for this project, would be the one to give you a better answer on that.
Sure.
He is not here today, but he is on the YouTube livestream, so he'll hear all the questions that y'all may have. But does anybody else have any questions on this slide? And let me quickly also explain the stars representing the security vestibule. We would be looking to approach some grant opportunities through this project, one of which would be aimed at security. The application would probably be more towards next spring, but this should be able to hopefully fund the majority of the security vestibule and potentially some of the outdoor lighting.
What was the name of that?
That was the COPS grant that I was telling you guys about a couple of months ago.
Yeah. And so we've put in for it. Jessica fed out, yeah. She's put in the application. We're, we think we're supposed to hear about it this month. And so do you know when they normally award those grants?
Depends on the year. I would say probably closer to November, but I could be wrong. I could double-check, too, with our grant team and see if they'd be able to give you a better, accurate assessment of that.
We had heard September, and that's, so we are waiting anxiously to see. But Jessica did a great job applying for that, and so.
Good, I'm glad.
If it does hit, if we do get that this fall, then we would look to start that project as soon as possible.
Definitely. Sounds good. I'm glad to hear that worked out.
Yeah.
But sorry, any other questions? Nope. Okay, so next, we'll walk you through the solar options available. So for some background on solar, there's three main ways that it's typically implemented at school districts. The first being what everybody typically thinks of, which is rooftop, which is basically where you're mounting it to the roof. The next being ground mount, which is where you're putting it on brackets on the ground. And then the last being carport, which is where you're putting it in your parking lot above the cars so that you both have solar and covered parking. And so these options evaluate all three of those potential opportunities. So the first solar option you can see here is a partial roof mount as well as a carport. And so we focused on areas of the roof that needed replacement the most, so that you could leave the ones that were still under warranty for the future and not have to replace them currently. And then this system would be about 530 kilowatts and give you about a 75% return on your electric baseline that you currently have. The next would be eliminating the rooftop, hence removing the need to do any form of a roof replacement if it's not a current priority of yours, and doing a larger, expanded version of a carport covering your entire parking lot. This would be about 580 kilowatts in size and return about 83% of your electric baseline.
Abby, would that, the carport option, is it more expensive to install? That's what I've been hearing.
Yeah, so that's also part of the pricing in here with the kind of offset of the electric usage that we did. The way that solar works is ground mount is the cheapest, then rooftop, then carport.
Okay, all right.
Yep. And with these options, we can obviously evaluate alternatives as well, if we wanted to do like a full roof system or move something to a different location. These were just our original projections for ideas.
Okay.
So then this third option is the one that we would promote to you the most. This is a ground mount in a unique situation in which we'd be using your land lab. We understand that FFA is a cornerstone program of your district. And so the idea here would be to install it in a way that the farm animals and cattle are still able to graze and go underneath the solar, as well as the production of crops would still be viable. But it would give you an opportunity for students to have an integration between agriculture and technology that we could then use for a variety of student engagement opportunities, from doing an event to helping you develop curriculum to installing a solar dashboard in your school that students could actually use in a dummy system. And so this one also has the highest return of 91% of your electric baseline with a larger system of 609 kilowatts.
I would have thought that would have been the most expensive, just because you have to get, you know, pylons in the ground, you have to get it up off the ground higher, but is it, is it not more expensive to install?
Nope, so this should actually be the most affordable option to install, just based on the structure that you'd be putting it on. And so, yeah, this is the one that we recommend the most.
I think labor's probably easier too, I guess, being on the ground.
Yeah, that's true.
Would that one, you can still run livestock and stuff under it too?
Yep, so livestock should still be able to be in the pen, go under it, interact with it, go on top of it if they want to. Hopefully not a cow, but maybe good. And, yeah, production of crops like alfalfa and all that should still be able to grow around and underneath the solar.
Does those move during, throughout the day, or are they stationary?
I believe we're planning to do a stationary system for this, but I can confirm that with Eric and let you know.
And are they low enough to actually, goats could climb on top of them, or are they up higher to where everything just goes under?
Yeah, I think they'll be like eight to 10 feet off the ground, so if they can jump really high. I'm not too sure how they can jump.
And that would be where we're not using out here for the cows right now, across the road?
Well, Abby's saying we could possibly use even where we're grazing at now, Walt, but we may have a few areas that are not under production or something we could look at, yeah.
I was looking at the field across from where the cattle are, we haven't bushed all of it or anything?
Right, right, yeah. Now, eventually, the reason it's not being grazed now, they just have a short section of fence they haven't finished. But once that, that fence is completed all the way around, they'll graze that as well.
I thought it was completed, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, they just lack a little bit of fencing.
Are the, this is part of the lease purchasing stuff you said, so would this be maintenance-wise, would that be our responsibility, or would we con- would that be part of our contract with you guys?
Yes, so that actually brings me to my next slide.
Perfect.
One of the things I've been doing over the last couple of months is talking to a variety of local and state agencies, one of which being Virginia Energy. And so, we did recently confirm with them the availability to do either direct purchase install for solar or power purchase agreement. Both of them have strong merits, depending on your situation, and so, when we move forward, we can evaluate both. And then, you can choose from there based on the financial figures, but if you were to do direct purchase, you would be responsible for the maintenance of solar. Through a PPA, you would not be.
Does everybody understand that? If we, if we did it through a PPA or a lease purchasing agreement, we don't, we're not responsible for the...
With the lease, lease purchasing, we would be.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, with a PPA, we would not be, yeah. If we purchased it, then we would. So, personally, you know, I don't want any responsibility on that, I can just imagine...
Yeah, that's the concern, we don't really have the staff to handle the maintenance, probably.
Yeah, we got enough to take care of without solar panels, so... But anyway, yeah, y'all can explain those options.
Certainly, and everything actually would fall under the lease purchase agreement, including the power purchase agreement, which is a little bit confusing, but it's a contract within a contract. And so, that's one option. Or if you did want to do direct purchase solar, you can also do a maintenance service agreement for the solar. So, we'll try to evaluate both options, because direct pay typically does have a higher yield of return in comparison with PPAs and our experience doing them, but we'd be able to offer you both options.
The, the figures that you had up earlier, Abby, are they, were they based off of purchasing, or...
These are currently based off direct purchase, as we originally thought we'd only be able to do that option, and so, we'd have to evaluate the PPA route.
Okay.
And then, the other organization that I was recently speaking to was Craig-Bodatot Electric Cooperative, and so, I was pleasantly surprised when speaking to them. It's a unique situation in which, through their net metering program, which is a really good one, they have only 2% allocated to non-jurisdictional and non-residential, which you guys would fall under, and so, the maximum availability for anyone under their service is 636 kilowatts. And so, as you can see, a lot of your different solar options range from, I think, 530 to 608, and so, you'd be taking the majority of that sector of the solar. And so, happily, I was able to speak with them, and no one has currently put in any applications, so the whole system is available if you were interested in moving forward. And you are available to take as much of the 636 as you would like. It would be run through their program director, which is Jeff Ahern, and there's an online interconnection application that we'd be working with you to submit over time, which only takes a couple of days to approve. So, it seems like a relatively simple process through the local electric cooperative to move forward with solar.
Is that 636 kilowatts of generation?
Yeah, ignore the H, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
I was just, I was concerned, it was like 636 kilowatt-hours a day or something.
Nope, that was my typo. But, yep, so, the point of this would be, there's a little bit of urgency when it comes to solar, if you are interested, just because if anybody puts in another application, you either may not be able to do any solar, or you'd have to limit the size of your array based on the amount that's currently left over, so...
So, it's first come, first served?
Yep.
Yeah. Once, if we were able to lock that in and get, say, 600 of that, 636, are we guaranteed to have that for the life of the array, or...
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Any other solar-related questions for now? So, now into the most exciting part that everybody loves, the estimated savings overview. And so, as you can see here, we broke down your baselines between your overall baseline and your electric baseline, and then brought back that original graph from the depiction to show you what it looks like for Craig. And so, as you can see, based on the implementation of solar, we're looking for anywhere from 75 to 91%, depending on the array you would choose, of feedback from that electric baseline specifically. So, we're not even including any other savings from any of the other measures, just because depending on what you choose, there might not be many related. And so, with that, given your numbers, you could save anywhere between $90,000 and $110,000 annually, and in Virginia, you can use a tax love, or a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement for 15 to 20 years, so at maximum, that would be around 2.27 million, that you'd be able to reinvest into your facilities based on your current budget, your current spending, and your perceived savings through a project. So, this is a really good figure, but is dependent on the implementation of solar. And then, with that, we'd also be looking to do that alternative funding options with you all. So, we'd be looking to approach a variety of grants, tax incentives, and rebates. So, as you can see, we have COPS up there, which you guys already applied for and hopefully will receive soon. And there's a couple other non-facilities-related grants that go with COPS that we'd also be interested in helping you guys apply to. In addition to something called a Community Change Grant, this is something that popped up recently, which would require you to partner with a local nonprofit organization, but could yield up to $10 million towards a project, so something I want to talk to you guys about if you have availability. And then, the following grants that have all the slashes instead of filled-in dates are ongoing programs that apply directly to solar. So, we have the ITC Tax Credit, which gives you about a 30 to 50% deduction in solar costs through the Inflation Reduction Act, as well as the 170-90 tax deduction, and the SRECs, which are the Solar Renewable Energy Credits. So, it's a really good time to invest in solar. Previously, we would not say that it would yield quite the quantity of savings that it does today, but through a variety of different federal programs that have come out in the last two or three years, it opens a lot of opportunities for you all. And so, we'd be working with Jessica and Jesse to, to look at these grants and put the applications forward. And then, the last thing I have for you is just a look toward the future. So, obviously, I'm here today doing that project overview to the school board, but from there, we'd be looking to discuss opportunities for procurement. So, the way that procurement works for one of these projects is in one of two ways, the first being the traditional state process, which would be competitive selection through an RFP process, and then the second being through a cooperative purchasing agreement, sorry, my brain stalled. And we would use OMNI, which I believe we've already vetted as some form of a purchasing that you guys have already used historically, and we have someone on our team, Chaz Reynolds, whose entire job is maintaining our contracts state by state and vetting the process for OMNI. So, we have a strong track record of working with them, and have done the majority of our projects with Prince William through those OMNI purchase contracts. And then, from there, we'd move into that investment-grade audit phase. This does take four to eight months to do the full development, probably on the lower side, since there's a limited amount of scope we're looking to do. But just so you have an idea of how long things would take to evaluate, we'd be aiming to do summer construction next year if things were to move forward soon. So, that's all I have. I appreciate the time, and if you guys have any more questions, please feel free to ask.
Abby, do you have a recommendation? Have y'all done it enough to see whether the cooperative purchasing agreement, is there more advantages to doing it that way, other than, I'm sure it cuts out a lot of red tape and probably speeds up the process a little bit too, doesn't it?
Yeah, so I would say, sorry, I would say that the typical procurement method takes a couple of months to conduct. Typically, you're going to release an RFQ for quals, and then you'll down-select to five, and then from there, you'll do walkthroughs and an RFP, so it typically takes, I don't know, three to six months to go through standard procurement, whereas OMNI would be pretty much instantaneous. So, that's the largest advantage of doing a cooperative purchase.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Abby? All right. Abby, thank you so much again for coming and presenting as excellent as usual. And would you do me a favor? Could you send me a copy of your presentation? And I apologize to the folks out there for not being able to see. So, if you'll email me your PowerPoint, I will forward it to you guys, and that way y'all can see everything.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got the school activity fund audit. It's there for everybody to review, and it's public as well, for anybody who would like to take a look at it. That's just the audit of our school activity fund from the CPA, nothing, no significant findings there, but it's there if you'd like to read through it. For the, that's the only fund that we have audited directly. The rest of our funds are audited when the county does their audit every year. Any questions on the audit? All right, here and done, we'll go on to new business. We've got graduation requirements. I guess, do you want to talk about some of that?
Yeah, we, we're kind of looking at some different things. Kind of came to our attention after we received our numbers from this year and looked at, you know, ways that we can try to get our graduation numbers up. They were good. Basically, we graduated everybody but one this year, and that student's still working, and we're going to try to get them across the stage too. But when we, it kind of opened our eyes of how we were doing things, and is it, is it kind of shooting us in the foot on one hand? And so, to, to kind of put that in, in light, the state requires 22 and 5 for a standard diploma. In other words, you have to have 22 credits to get a standard diploma. Five of those have to be verified credits, which are using your SOL scores. The advanced studies diploma for the state requires 26 credits plus five of the verified credits. The county, here in Craig County, we had kind of raised the bar, and I certainly understand that. We certainly want to push our kids, we want to give them rigorous curriculum, and we do want to kind of raise the bar for our students. And so, I'm not sure when it was, but it was passed by the board that, for advanced diploma here in the county, students have to get 28 credits instead of the state's 26. So, when we looked at that, it was like, it is good, but at the same time, if we have a student that's struggling, it may be hard for them to get 28. Even more so, maybe the 22 on the standard. So, we just want to see if maybe it would be better if we just go with the state standard, do 26, which is what the state recommends or requires, and versus the 28. We don't have to take action on it tonight. Again, just want to kind of put it out there for you guys to consider. And then, I was trying to think if there was any other... We also had talked about, I think this has been kicked around several times, about whether we want to require community service as part of graduation. A lot of schools do this, some require like 10 hours of community service by the time they, before they graduate. Some require, Trace had mentioned, I think, in Florida where he was in school, they required 40 hours, and it starts in your high school career. So, it's like 10 hours for each year, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, 10 hours each year. So, you know, again, just kind of something to put out for y'all's consideration. I think I could see somewhere a happy medium, maybe 20 hours. Kids could start on it as soon as their freshman year, or when they enter high school, but that would give them plenty of time to do that over the course of several years, and I think 20 is a reasonable number. I like that idea. I think, you know, we want to try to instill that, that notion of being a good citizen and creating a servant's heart and that kind of thing. And so, I would be in favor of that if the board seen fit to, to put that as part of the graduation requirements. Was there anything else along with that, or does anybody have questions about that and those requirements? If y'all would like, we could try to draft it up into like a formal proposal, and that way you can, you can see it. I'm not sure if it made sense in the attachments that we sent y'all in this packet, sometimes they can be a little confusing. So, if it would help, we could kind of write it up differently, as like, here's what it is now, here's, here's maybe what we would propose, or here's Option A, or Option B, something like that. Would, would that help?
Yeah, I'd like to see a couple of options up.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. But again, we don't have to take action on it tonight. Let's, let's write it up that way, and to where, give you guys a couple of options to consider, and then, then let's try to get a motion on it and deal with it at that point. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're talking about the schools. I had talked to you the other day when I was down at the school board office, just throwing it out there, because I had a few phone calls about homework and stuff after school, you know, a lot of the teaching methods now is different from the way the parents done, and they're having a hard time sometimes te- helping their kids with any homework or whatever. And as you said, there wasn't a lot of, you didn't think there was a lot of homework when home, most teachers tried to do it in class so that the child had help in class. I noticed that being a trend going across the United States, a lot of schools are doing away with basically homework because they're getting the wrong, the parents are trying to help, but they're helping in the wrong way. They're teaching them the wrong ways to do math, because the way they do math now ain't the way I did math when I was in school. So, I think that would be a, I don't know if that should be something that, I don't think needs to really be a policy, but I think it needs to be something that needs to be looked at as a school as a whole, in order to try to do most of the work in school so they get the proper instruction, instead of a parent trying to help with the wrong instruction, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's not that they're necessarily trying to make them do it wrong, it's just they don't know how to do it the school's way.
Yeah, yeah, we were taught a different way to do math.
Yeah.
And so, no, I, I understand that. In Grayson County, I can tell you, they did pass a policy that said that teachers couldn't give more than 15 minutes of homework per night. I really don't want to kind of get that strict with it. I think there are some classes, like advanced math and some of your AP classes, that's probably going to require at times more than 15 minutes a night. But at the same time, I certainly understand what, what they're saying, and all the research backs that up, that giving lengthy amounts of homework every night does not improve student performance. Okay, so all the research kind of bears that out. I do think it, there needs to be a happy medium there. We can certainly look at it. I would, I would probably rather do it as a guideline, but this...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, just put the, the information out there and trust the teachers to, to make those adjustments.
Yeah, and then, you know, if we do get complaints from students or parents that, hey, my kid's staying up till midnight doing homework every night, then we address those particular subjects or those teachers that are, are in that boat and, and kind of deal with it that way. Rather than set a hard and fast policy, I think we could just put out some... that way. Rather than set a hard and fast policy, I think we could just put out some, some rules and guidelines to say, let's try to do it this way. Let's use some common sense about how much homework we give our students.
Yeah, because the way I look at it, when they spend however many hours they spend in a day here to learn their education, when they get out of school, in my opinion, that's the time that the parents should be teaching them how to, you know, be productive in life outside of school.
Yeah.
So.
The other thing about that was, you know, I understand that, you know, I would want to try to teach my kids some of the, the subjects that they're needing help in. And we do have the good tutoring resources online now so that if the parent doesn't know how to teach trigonometry when their kid comes home, then, you know, we need to provide the parents with, okay, here's a good online source that that kid can get their help from so that you don't have to learn trigonometry. And I, and I think that's a good way to approach that as well.
One of the biggest issues in Craig County that I see with the online tutoring and stuff is a lot of us don't have good enough internet to even use it. I know at my house, we don't have, we don't have enough internet to even, a lot of times they have problems doing their homework that's on Chromebook.
Yeah.
Because we don't have enough internet service to pull it. And we used to be able to use US Cellular. US Cellular don't have good enough service now to stream their Chromebooks either.
Has something happened there with US Cellular?
When they switched over to 5G, it shut the services way down across County.
I haven't heard that. Ms. Snyder and I have a meeting scheduled with the US Cellular representative for us and we were hoping to do it last week, but she had to cancel. That's one of the things we're going to check on is, one, if we can get the MiFi boxes back. If y'all remember, we had some of those during the COVID years to help with that. We'll, we'll see what the availability, availability of that is and we'll get a couple of those units here for kids that have problems with internet. But then also, they, they have some other programs coming down the pike. I was really hoping the 5G would, would make it better, not worse. But we might also talk with T-Mobile and see what programs they have and, and just see what we need to do. I won't say we can remove every barrier for people that don't have. Usually, if they don't have good internet, where, where you can fix it is if they still have a good phone signal, even though they may not have good internet. If they have a good phone signal, then we might be able to help out. So we'll, we'll look into that. And Shelley and I have, have a meeting planned, I think next week with, with those folks to see if we can improve on that.
Yeah. I think some, some lobbying to the, to the county would be advantageous there too. You know, we've, we've been doing, trying to do some work, you know, on the broadband committee there. Unfortunately, a lot of times we end up falling short because we don't have any county funds to put towards it. We're really, we're trying to partner with private companies to bring this out and we're hoping that they put up enough money in conjunction with the state money and the county has yet to put any money towards it. You know, that's something I've been trying to work on, but I, you know, if you want to spread around to let people know, to let the county know that they would like some money spent on that, it would go a long way to helping us get some state money too because, just because of the way that those formulas work when they're trying to decide which projects to fund. If we put some money towards it, there's a much better likelihood that we get funded from the state dollars as well.
I just know in 2018, we used to have full service with US Cellular, like at our house. Now we're lucky to get two to three bars.
Yeah, so 5G made things faster, but the range is lower. So if you, if you live further away, you end up getting actually a little slower because of the range. Yeah. So if you're standing right next to it, it's faster. If you're further away, it could be a little slower. Yeah.
Interesting.
Anything else on the graduation requirements? So Abby, you are more than welcome to stay, but don't feel obligated to sit through all of this either. If you're more than welcome to leave, nobody's going to feel bad about it. All right, we've got the VSB A August 2024 policy updates. These are first reading. So again, this is not approving the policy. This is just approving, first reading to be put up on the website for comment. Do we have a motion to approve the VSB August, VSB August 2024 policy updates for first reading?
I make a motion to approve the VSB A policy update August 2024 of the first reading.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mr. Gilreith, seconded by Mr. Margiston. All in favor, raise your hand. All righty. Then we've got 6.3. This is the staff leaves and absences regulation policy. There was some tweaks there made, just a few. It wasn't anything crazy. I think most of it was around unpaid leave was, was really the only significant changes. The rest of it was mostly just some, some wording changes.
Yeah, again, we've, we've just had a lot of absences in the last couple of years, really ever since COVID. And, you know, we, we always encourage our teachers and staff to try to schedule appointments on, you know, out of school time when you, when it's possible. I know it's not always possible, but just try to cut down just because we're still shorthanded on our number of substitutes that we have available. And so trying to clean that up a little bit, that policy of how we handle unpaid leave, it really wasn't clear. And, you know, we could have employees taking many, many, many days of unpaid leave and that really puts us in a bind when that happens. Sometimes we understand it's, it's an emergency situation or just something that's out of the person's control, but we're just seeing a lot of that. And then also, I think we had a little bit we needed to clean up on our policy concerning the personal days. The policy was kind of vague in that they didn't really want you to take a personal day before or after a holiday, but it didn't really say that you couldn't either. So we just wanted to try to clean that up a little bit, make sure that we don't have people taking advantage of that to where we have a lot of staff off on the same days around holidays.
Yeah, tighten some things up with the unpaid thing, but even in some ways made it a little more lenient because there was one, one clause in particular that said they had to request unpaid leave 15 days before the leave, which if you're using unpaid leave, it's probably because you're sick. So, you know, technically they'd have been in violation of the policy. So it's, it was, there was a little weird stuff there too. So just clean that up. And so that made it a little more lenient, but, but then tightened some other stuff up. Yeah, and I forgot about the.
The personal days.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot that we, we had gone over those as well.
Are they, I don't know if it's possible or if it's even necessary, but I have noticed not necessarily at the school, but other schools, there's, I've seen people do elective surgeries during school time.
That's.
Are they any, is it, I didn't notice it in this policy anywhere. Are they anywhere to put that elective surgeries need to be done outside of the school year?
We, we would certainly prefer that they were.
I know we prefer.
I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can dictate it since it is a health concern. I'm not sure that we can dictate that. And sometimes that, you know, falls to the scheduling ability of the hospitals and things.
Yeah, we certainly encourage that. You know, that's what I say. A lot of times you guys hear me, you know, up here saying, we, you know, please help us out with this. Schedule those appointments in you can during summer months or after school hours. But really, I think all we can do is just request it. I don't think we could mandate that to say you have to do it because like Trey said, it's, it's a health matter.
Right. If it's a sick, I mean, it's regular sick leave, I understand it, but if they're, if they know they're out of sick leave and it's elective surgery, not a health emergency surgery, but elective surgery, I think that we should have the right to refuse them.
Well.
That was some of the ideas with making some of those adjustments with the unpaid leave and the policy and stuff too, was that I think some of those issues may work themselves out with the change in the policy here as well, without strictly saying, without strictly necessarily targeting a specific instance that people are late. I think just more broadly, not late, sorry, absent or, or missing unpaid days and stuff. I think we can kind of cover that same, fix that issue more broadly by fixing some of the unpaid stuff. If you agree, that's, I think that was kind of what we were, that's kind of what we were aiming for. And that was one of the concerns when we were reviewing the policy because we have had instances of that.
Yeah. And, and what this is trying to do is to get prior approval from your supervisor first. So in, in that situation where, you know, somebody might be looking at elective surgery, at least they got to come to their supervisor first and say, hey, this is what I need, I need to be off of this right here. Then at, at least you can have that conversation to say, well, would it be possible to schedule that in June or July? You know, not that we can mandate it, but at least have that conversation.
Basically, it's legalized theft.
It's unpaid, so we doctor pay for it.
Yeah, that's true too.
Yeah, but if they're still getting their insurance benefits and not being at school, we're having higher other people.
Yeah, and, yeah. And there is, yeah, there is some expense to that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Yeah, we have to hire them.
It's a huge cost to the school system. So that's why I was wanting to mention it should, I think it should be in policy.
Mm-hmm.
If it's not a health necessity.
Right. Yeah, elective surgery. Yeah. I'd probably want to check with, with some of the legal counsel.
That's what I was saying. We probably, to actually put that into a policy, we'd probably need legal advice. When you start playing into the medical stuff like that, there's a lot of ramifications.
Yeah.
Getting the right doctor sometime, solid.
What's that?
Getting the right doctor sometime is really.
Right.
Might be elective, but then it'd be necessary if you wait too long sometime.
Yeah, true.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments about that, those changes?
Do we have a motion to approve GCBD dash R for first reading?
I make a motion to approve GCBD dash R for the first reading.
I'll second that motion.
All right, moved by Mr. Gilreith, seconded by Mr. Margiston. All in favor, raise your hand. All right. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole or pull anything off?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
I'll second that motion.
All right, moved by Mr. Margiston, seconded by Mr. Gilreith. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. All right, and then we do have a closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion to go into closed session according to Virginia Code 2.2-3711 dot A. Motion will be made to go into closed session for the discussion of personnel matters.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Gilreith, seconded by Mr. Margiston. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you guys. All right, thank you guys.
I make a motion to clarify according to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23712 that to the best of each member's knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Bill Rethon. If you favor raise your hand.
All righty. We have no actions from closed session, so just some informational items. These were on there last month as well for some of the VSBA conferences. The superintendent evaluation workshop one is coming up in about a month. And then the convention is in November. Then there's some other ones there too, FOIA and legislative advocacy. Both neither of those two are very exciting. Last time I went, but if you want to go. Just let Jessica know if you guys want to attend any of those. Are there any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, hearing nothing, then we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.